The humor up here at the front counter and we'll go ahead and call it as you need to order and I'll offer a prayer and then we'll stand for the pledge. Lord, we ask that you be with us this morning as we take up our agenda items, take up the business before the counting. Lord, we always seek your wisdom and your counsel and cast that you guide us through all of our discussions and ultimately the decisions that are made. And that our prayer would be that those decisions would be for the benefit of those who call what we count home. Lord, we also are grateful that you offer your protection, Lord, for our military men and women. Lord, this is a different time, probably not different than other times in our nation's history. But we just ask that you keep your hand upon them and that they would return home safely to their families. And we're just grateful for their service, their bravery, their willingness to defend the freedoms that we enjoy here this morning. So, Lord, we just thank you and want to praise you and give you all the glory in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregretted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get the minutes knocked down if you've had a chance to review those, June seventeen, through the course.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes as written here.
We have a motion by Joe in a second, Eric, to approve the minutes from June seventeenth. Any further discussion, say no, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Minutes approved. Next, we have a request for a refund on taxes and I'll distribute this. The information we have has been provided by the assessor's office with all the documentation. So look that over and then we'll all make a motion.
Make a motion to go ahead and approve the... How do you get that word in there?
Tax rate file.
Yeah, a refund for that. How much were it?
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second to approve the tax refund, personal property tax refund that was submitted by the assessor's office. And it's in the amount of two hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-three cents. I had a motion as second, do I have any further discussion? Say no, in favor, please say aye and sign the... Aye, and please sign the tax refund proof. Next order of business will be library board appointments. I think, as you know, the county appoints five members to the library board. The city eleven appoints four, and this was set up years and years and years ago. And this year, we had, we had two individuals, one that's deceased and we had filled a vacancy there. That vacancy's currently been filled with Bob Scobie. Bob was a previous board member, I think I looked back and it was like eighteen to twenty-one, Joe, was that right?
I believe that's correct, yeah.
Okay, and, and then I can't find any served on the board past that. He is on the Friends of the Library, I believe. And then the other appointment, Sam Allen, after, I believe, twenty years. Sam has stepped down from the library board and he was honored with that the other day, looked like, seen that in the newspaper. And so we have those two positions to fill. And then in twenty-six, we will have one, and then in twenty-seven, we will have two. So we've received six applications. I've distributed those. We've also, Joe has reviewed the bylaws of the library. And it speaks to the length of time that an individual can serve continuously. But it doesn't speak to any... Am I correct, Joe, doesn't speak to the fact that somebody could stand down and then they could be reappointed?
As best as I can read it, that's, that's correct, because it says consecutive terms there. So if they, they do step aside and they come back later, yeah.
So, so that's what we have, gentlemen. The individuals that have submitted letters of interest. Our own Heather Officer, Heather is a member of the foundation board, I believe. We've also received an interest from Bob Scobie. We've also received a letter of interest from Callie Mae Bertram Bennett. We've also received a letter of interest from Kathleen Hafner. And I believe she has some... I don't know if she's on Friends of the Library or the Found... She was a member of the foundation board. And then we have Carrie Lewis, and I believe she's active in the Route sixty-six society, I believe. And she had, she had submitted a letter of interest last year when we had the vacancy. And she has also submitted a letter of interest. And then we have Denny Bob, and he has submitted a letter of interest. So, gentlemen, is that six?
I think so.
Okay, so that's the six individuals that have expressed their interest. I would like to discuss those. I think all six sincerely have the desire to serve, obviously just by way of their application. But also reading their, their bios or their information that they submitted. They all have really good credentials. Each would probably bring a unique perspective or value to the library board. So I think it's probably... We have good options and in ones that maybe aren't selected, I would encourage them to submit applications next year or the year after. And it's, it's up to this body to make those appointments. I, I personally, I, I, I think Heather would be an outstanding board member. And so I would, I would put her name forward for consideration. If we want to do them one at a, one at a time, is there any, any thoughts or hesitation? I mean, we've all, we've all looked at the individuals I have met. Of course, I know Bob Scobie. I've not met Ms. Bennett. Ms. Hafner I have met, she, when we were in the process of completing our nine-one-one building. She had been here a few times to assist in gathering some historical information relating to what we, we might incorporate from a historical standpoint into the, into the building. Primarily some of the research on the shares that have been, that has served in the past. Ms. Lewis, I met her about a year ago. Bruce Owen had brought her by and introduced her and seems very sincere and an active interest. And then Denny Bob, I know Denny from his time when he was down in Spring State Parks. So some of the individuals I know, and again, I think all of them would be worthy of consideration.
Yeah, I agree, Randy, I don't believe there's a bad candidate in the bunch and that's what makes decisions, like you see, a little bit rougher. Everything, and I do know a few of them and have met a few of the others that you spoke of. And some that, well, I feel, you know, you take their character, stuff into expense as well. And then like you say, where their backgrounds and stuff come from and what they, what they can do, and I believe every one of them has something to offer. But I am in agreeance with you as far as for Heather goes, I think that would be... And I've got them actually listed down through here after reading over and going over them, that Heather would be under one pick there. And then I actually have Callie Bennett down as mine for two. So that's where I stand on my appointments.
And I am good with Heather Officer. I would probably waffle a little bit back and forth on those two. But I don't know either one personally.
Yep, same here, I don't know either one personally either. I believe I have met this one right here, like you said, I wouldn't know. I don't want to think I did meet her one time, so. So he's waffling and you're deciding, so I've already spoken.
Well, I would, I would consider Bob Scobie myself. The library director did send a letter of support for him. And of course, she works with the board, obviously works for the board. But she did send that, so I would, I would put his name out there. And then also...
I would be fine with Mr. Scobie as long as the, it wasn't an issue with the bylaws.
I don't see that being no issue, and that's, and I've got Bob down there as my third and everything. So I wouldn't have any problem with everybody having the same there. Because the way I understand the bylaws is it consecutive terms. And he had been out for a while. We appointed him due to the death of Mr. Turner, I believe it was, and everything for him to fill that out. So, and also with that, I don't see anything in there where it comes up from filling out fulfillment of a term from appointment either. So, so the bylaws there, as far as that goes, a consecutive part of it, that does not entail him, he's an eligible candidate. For sure. So, and then with what happened with Mr. Allen, I don't know his twenty years of service there, if that was all on the board or if that was some other, a couple of other things that goes on for him serving for twenty years for the library or how all that really went. I did read it, did see it in the paper, it was a good article there, so that... So, yeah. If you both are good with Bob, then I retract my Callie Bennett and go with Bob as the number two.
Okay. The consensus appears to be reached that we will appoint Heather Officer and Bob Scobie to serve on the library board for three-year terms that begin in twenty-five, so their terms would end in twenty-twenty-eight. I would, I would take that in an official motion.
I'd be able to ask a quick question, or would you like me to wait until other comments?
I, I think it would be appropriate, Jack, to wait to be finished, yeah.
I would move for a motion to appoint Heather Officer and Bob Scobie to the library board this time.
Okay, I have a motion second to approve Heather Officer and Bob Scobie to the library board. And any further discussion, say no, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. We will notify them and we'll notify the library director. And then we'll also send the, all the candidates a letter thanking them for their desire to serve and to the least, yeah.
Yep. You bet, appreciate it.
Jack?
Yes, I was just gonna ask, because I don't know, are there any restrictions with elected officials serving on county-appointed boards?
If you have information, you please let me know, but I'm not aware of anything. I suspect that different elected officials do serve on community boards. I might even inquire through a chamber director, because she may know of some that, that would maybe be. And I know the chamber maybe isn't a, a community not-for-profit necessarily, but Ashley may know if there's others that do. But we, we can't hold other elected positions. So if you're on a school board and you decide you want to run for county commission or county office, you would sacrifice your school board position, so I know that. But from the standpoint of just serving on a board, Jack, I think is an excellent question, but I'm not, I'm not aware of that. I think we probably have had elected officials serve on COE, okay? Do we have elected officials serving on other governmental-type boards? You know, I'll, I'll have to think about that. But it's a great question. And if we find out something that would, that would impact our decision, then we will, we'll discuss that and bring that back up. But I'm not aware of anything.
Okay.
It's, I can see, it's not in the Board of Trustees bylaws that someone who owns a public office can, you know, they can be on that board. It's not in their bylaws.
So, Jack, if you find anything, let me, let, let me know, other than that. Okay. Good, good question. Now, we're in general county business. And I think since we have our mechanic for Roanoke Bridge just walked in. And we're in general county business, I don't know why, gentlemen, we wouldn't start there, do you have any objection?
No, sir.
Okay, Matt, why don't you come up to the front row and...
Don't get over the line, that would add on the list, this is just...
Thank you.
This is just the rest of, of the full estimates of stuff that I've gotten, kind of burnt down a little more. And Randy, as we talked about yesterday, the diagnostic, there is all the information on that. There is three different levels on the top, and then there is a cheaper one that's in the bottom of that that will just do just a scanning and clearing the codes as we had talked on the phone. And then here is, he emailed me this morning of everything that's on that list that I was waiting for.
So it's, Matt was requested to come in and as the mechanic for Roanoke Bridge, he has, looks like a want list of things that he believes would help facilitate his ability to perform the work that we're asking to do. It's for information purposes only at this moment. But, so, Matt, that's, that's why you're here, is that, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and most of the items that are on the list, other than a couple of few, are mainly safety-related stuff too. And then one of, I think about the really main pressing thing would be the battery impact.
Okay, so let me ask you about that, because I tend to ask a lot of questions. Make sure that the, that the resources are there to get the job done, but at the same time to make sure that they're the correct... And I'm stepping into your world here.
Yeah.
But it wasn't that long ago, prior to you and prior to Eric and Joe, that we purchased some Milwaukee Impact. Are they still around?
It's broken.
We, we purchased two at the time, if I'm not mistaken.
I only know of one.
Okay, and it's, and it's broke?
Yeah.
Okay.
The battery does not stay in it.
Okay.
Is that a two-door drive, happy drive, that one inch, one inch, okay?
Yeah, but it's the stubby version, so you have to use two extensions to even get inside the semi tire. Yeah, we had that incident, we lost a wheel in sleeper the other day. Due to, George was the one that, he did it when I was having to do my grip test. And then we ended up having to go back out and take some lumps and put that wheel back on.
So on your, on your truck, you, you don't have a generator on there?
Here's the gas-fired air compressor.
And it's just...
It ain't got enough power. One of the air impacts. And as long as the shop stuff, and one of the items, and there is an airline kit, I believe that is our problem, is the airlines in the shop. But it does not have enough power, even when my half-inch drive air impact. And it takes a rail air of similar power. And it took me thirty minutes to air it here to learn how it runs. But that's where I'm thinking, because the line coming out of the air compressor is way too small. And it doesn't have enough volume to feed for the big air impact that we do carry, the one-inch drive air impact.
So the non, non-functioning impact is at the shop right now? Okay, and it's just put on a shelf with defective, non-working parts?
They were, they were, George was using it last week, but he had to hold the battery and then tape it on there. And he had to twist like the handle a bit.
That's what guys do, Matt, we...
Yeah, make it work.
We use duct tape, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay.
I got duct tape as a brother's tape, yeah.
See?
Just, yeah. It's how I use better than anyone, where the duct tape, it seems like.
And so what, where, where do you want to start? And then how do you rate these in priority? You know, sometimes my grandsons give me birthday lists and Christmas lists, you know, and sometimes they can be rather lengthy, sometimes rather short, because they have something that they really, really want that they recognize is a little more expensive than maybe some of these others. So you're probably young enough to be my grandson, so would you want to prioritize these based upon your Christmas wish list?
I mean, I think, I mean, the biggest thing, some sort of an air impact or we tackle the airlines, at least in the shop, or not air impact, battery impact. And then the only other real pressing thing would probably be the exposure due to that wall is open insulation. And it's, the grinders are bolted in the ground right in front of it all. That's just the last of what we used to be done. And then there was also a bunch of mold inside the office, so.
That needs to be addressed, as sure as the mold situation there.
But yeah, I'd say probably be the air impact and then the, the drive-on ramps would be the next two.
And, and I've thought of it at the shop on a daily basis, but do we not have any ramps over there?
For the semis.
White duty trucks on them.
Yeah, yeah, and we got that two-post lift, but it's A, in the wrong vicinity of the shop to utilize it. These all are Truscher cab chassis, so we, you know, we're talking, we got thirteen-foot long beds. And that lift's pushed so far forward, you can't utilize it. And then you can't work around it, because it's right up against the wall, and you got everything else on the other side. So that's one item. Like I, I mentioned to you, about maybe we can list it for sale, you know, build it at the, the dub options or something. And try to get rid of it, but it's gonna cost more to move it to where we can utilize it than I would think to get rid of it.
These ramps are portable, then I take it?
Yep, they just roll around, they come in pairs, and so you've got one...
So just like my lawnmower, but on steroids?
Yeah, yeah. They're just, they're twenty-ton ramps, is what they call them. And they have two wheels and a handle you pull out to move them around. And you set them on the ground and it just uses friction, and you just drive a truck right up on top of it. And you can do it with rear or the, the front tires, either direction.
And because safety is always front of mind for us and for you, how did you, how do you chalk that, that vehicle then from rolling backwards or something?
That was one thing I was worried, I put that in there.
Real trucks.
Yeah, that was... I got a thing there, all we have right now is wood blocks for everything. And we don't have any jack stands for the semis or nothing. So everything's done by wooden blocks, as, as of right now. And we've only got one air jack, like big air jack too. That's where I'd be, it'd be a lot easier, you know, a lot safer and easier to, for oil changes, drive line problems. Or even like doing the brakes the other day. Where we needed an air jack out in the field, but the brakes needed to be done in the shop.
How would you think that air compressor is over there?
Well, I asked Tom Beard and he didn't even know. So he thought it was at least ten years, if not older. The most I've found out that anybody's ever done is drain the water out every Thursday. As far as that, I don't think it's ever been serviced. I mean, other than that, I just, I don't know anything about it. It sounds good, I mean, even being in its little room back there, it doesn't look horrible for what it is. But the airline coming out is like a half-inch airline going to one-inch to three-eighths lines everywhere else, so. The volume, I think, is the issue more than PSI. Do they have rebuild kits for the airline?
For the air compressor itself?
They should, they should have rebuild kits for it. Being, you know, Randy, they should have.
I know the compressor part, when you rebuild now, the electric motors are just electric motors. I'm not thinking, I'm more leaning toward the same deal, where he is, the volume of it, I think the compressor is fine. Because I mean, it, it starts up good, it sounds good, like you say, and because I've been there on that. But I believe it's gonna be the volume that's carrying, I do believe that line. What size is that line?
It's tiny.
It's not, it's not three-quarters.
No, it's small.
It shouldn't be that big of a compressor, should have a three-quarter coming out of it.
Or even a one-inch, as much as big stuff.
I, I think it's less than half, it may be half, maybe three-eighths even.
Yeah.
I don't remember, but...
But that, and then on top of that, every airline in that place leaks, whether it's just from where it's raining out the wall and rubbed from over the years from vibration. or where all the fittings connect to go to the hose reels.
And you're addressing that in your airline kit?
Yes, yep, and then, uh, the hose reels, we've got two of them that do not retract anymore. So when you pull them out, you get it to unlock and it'll kind of relax a little bit, then you have to go over there and hand roll it all back up.
So then you've got lines laying around.
Yep.
And then stuck on trip, don't we?
Trip hazards.
And they've got all sorts of, like on the bigger lines, they've got all sorts of janky fittings mocked up. So they dumb it down because of the one three eighths line that's in there doesn't carry any air, for whatever reason. I have to get to tackle that and figure out why. And then, we want to do that high, brush cutter five. With all hydraulic leaks.
With all the what?
Hydraulic leaks. Almost every moving part of the leaks. And who was this bad, or was it?
That's the one we just got back from the job here, that, that depth sensor.
Five?
The code's gone.
You're talking about rush better five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Gone for that? Yeah, I, I ran it around all, all morning this morning, could never get it to kick back on.
So we've got a mystery.
Yeah, and it may just be because of the regen that it did.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure. I might have to wait and come back and load it again.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Next question.
Man, I managed to get it to kick on, but, um, I haven't been trained fully on those. I'll have somebody there that knows what they're doing to walk me through it.
And you're saying it has a bunch of hydraulic?
Yeah, so.
Hoses or?
Turn every moving points, so every hydraulic cylinder, and the turntable on it, every pivot point, and then the front pump. I mean, I filled it up, well, Thursday, let's see. I filled it up Thursday last week. It was out yesterday morning.
So it's just leaking under pressure or leaking while it's been raining?
So, uh.
But you said you ran it just a little bit, turned it on, just run it, but not actually using it? So it's not under load?
Right, but I, I'm assuming it's leaking all the time, because when I come back Monday morning, I mean, there was a puddle laying there. And all I did was back it out of the shower.
It's got some seals, seals there, it's got seals too.
Yep, but the hydraulic cylinders, every time you move them, they leak, the, every time you turn.
Sure, that's what I'm saying, there are your seals in your cylinders.
Yeah. So that's where, I knew you talked about it, you possibly sell it or something at one point. So that's where you want to stick more into it and continue to fix it, or. Building there, that one ton Dodge that's sitting inside the shop, that's, no one seems to really use that much.
Forty-five hundred?
Yeah, they say it's for the concrete. Uh, with the, the steering, I think I've narrowed it down to what it is. It's the track bar, which keeps the axle centered under the truck. The pin where it bolts to the frame, they shoot off. So I would like to start there and redo the whole steering aspect of it.
That, that sounded all right, because I drove that truck, I mean, I took it out to Mary Kay's and Rose and stuff before. And I mean, it, it drives like one of my old trucks that I used to drive back when I was younger.
Yeah.
And one of them I still have.
Yeah.
So, but, but I mean, it'll still run ninety-five though.
Yeah, John took it out the other day and I heard him comment when he come back, it hadn't turned the wheel when he got in, or got it up to the shop. And that track bar, you see it just moving and the whole axle shifting from one side to the other.
That's what it is, the end, slappes.
Yeah.
So I, I think for, for me, it would be helpful, Matt, since you've just assumed this responsibility and came on board. Uh, it sounds like that, uh, you're, you're appraising the equipment, right? More repair, whatever. I, I would like to see that in a written, uh, format, so it would help me to understand more. So if you would, uh, and, um, as, as soon as you can, but it's not, it's not urgent. So that we can really take, uh, a real close look at where, what are the equipment needs are right now.
Okay.
Um, I'm not really going to want to make a lot of decisions on the spur of the moment.
Right.
So, um, uh, I, I would really like to see a written, like brush cutter five, or things I'm hearing about it now that I haven't heard before. I think that'd be important to know, saying we own this Dodge vehicle, which you just mentioned, and I think we've got probably another piece of equipment over there too, one of the dump trucks.
Yeah, the black truck, that's, that was the last thing I was going to bring up. What do you want me to go about, because everyone's told me a different story with it?
Well, I, uh, for me, again, would be helpful to know, uh, what your, uh, what your research reveals. And to do that in a, in a format that I have in front of me, so I can try to, try to make sense out of it.
Well, uh, for that truck, from what I'm just looking at it, I'm going to have to pull the engine apart. From, at least, then I gotta pull the head off to see where, what's broken. Because it is dumping oil and coolant out of the head.
Okay, so then, uh, that would be important to know, but then it'd be important for us to know, uh, how we want to determine what the priorities are on fixing that equipment. One might be more urgent if we need to repair it, the other might be able to set for two or three months. It seems like we've got a lot going on right now. You know, we're wanting to, uh, clean up the shop, which I really appreciate. There's nothing more frustrating for me to get into a shop and you can't find your tools and, you know, somebody's left something, so I, I really appreciate that. But now we've got a lot here going on, and, and I think we could help you to determine what that priority is. Uh, because we have a lot of road work yet to do this year. And some of this may have to take a little bit of a, of a backseat until we, because there could be other things that, that come up. So that's, that's my thinking, gentlemen, um, um, on, on this. Review it, look at our budget, uh, let Matt get back to us on, on, on the equipment. And then the three of us determine what that priority of repair would, would be like. Uh, we, we will have a new brush cutter coming in this fall sometime. But we have a lot of rush to cut between now and then.
Yes, we do.
So, um, you know, we may have to put a little bit more in it and, and to try and get through the rest of the summer. So that's going to be my recommendation, to me, safety is always number one. So whatever on this list, uh, uh, is, is a safety concern or issue, I think that needs to be addressed first. And then, uh, look at replacing the equipment that might be, uh, no longer in service just due to it's been used, right? Okay, and then, uh, and then the office, uh, repair, it's, it's, uh, you know, uh, needs done, but probably not a priority at the moment as compared to some of the other things that we're going to ask you to. There, there might be another way that we handle that, and it might not be through road and bridge. It might be through contracting it out, it might be through maintenance, uh, but there's other options that we could have there. I would rather you focus on, uh, maintaining the equipment, keeping us on the road. And then if there's some re, repair work around the shop, there's down days, that, uh, we may get some rainy days, uh, that some of the other guys can come in and, and help. And, uh, so that's my, that's my two cents word. Uh, and I, and then I would like to hear more about the diagnostic, uh, equipment. Uh, Matt had called me a couple of days ago, I understand on the international.
Truck seventeen, yep.
Yeah.
So, we're, at least since I've been here, that'd be the third thing that has, we needed some sort of a diagnostic scanner or tool.
So, so I think you were telling me that if the, uh, rush comes down to repair, we're going to have windshield time and a trip charge, right? And that's just to read the code, and then we don't know what happens after that.
And I talk to them, and that is a mandatory fee, whether it's.
Okay, but if we have this, uh, if we have this, uh, reader, uh, how does that benefit us?
So basically, like, with what they said, they had check engine light, or I guess with the alternator, it'd be rated on, so it slowed them down, saying, hey, you know, you can't go over this speed due to whatever issues going on with the truck. I could take that, whether it's to them or in the shop, hook up to it, read exactly what's going on, with how many computers are in these trucks. The computer in the truck will tell, that computer is exactly what it's doing. And I can read out every detail, and that will tell me, like, from the list you sent me, if it's covered under the extended warranties and warranties, right? Then I could determine off of that list if it's something we need to call them for, or if we just need to bring it back to the shop and do it ourselves.
Okay, so will this be sold handheld too? Will that do what you need to do?
Like how you were just talking about going up to O'Reilly's?
Uh-huh.
That's just about it, just bare bones. It'll tell you a code, it won't tell you any more than that. You ain't, you can clear the codes, and that's about it.
Okay.
So it's like the one, like, you pull up to O'Reilly's, and you got check engine light on, that's more or less what they do. They just come out, read it, and can possibly clear it. Some things, like some of the DEF items on that little one, it will not read on the DEF. And that little one will not read, like, John Deere tractors. That bigger one will go through the John Deere tractors or any other sort of equipment you can, any equipment you could possibly imagine. The bigger one will read on everything.
So then it's your recommendation not to purchase that handheld too?
I mean, I would, for, if you wanted to do more in-house, I would prefer the bigger one, because you, with the, the biggest thing is computers. Everything's computers and wiring. And that will tell me all the readouts of the electrical system, what the ECMs are doing, what the DEF system's doing. The bigger one, I could also, uh, like if the truck drivers, for whatever reason, don't ever park it and give it a full regen, and that DEF filter gets full. They, the big ones, they'd have to call a dealership with that big one, I can go in there, reset the computer to make it think it's not full. Force it into a regen, and let it sit there and burn all that filter out, and then put the truck right back on the road.
Is there any regular maintenance that helps prevent that?
Truck drivers paying attention to when it's full, and letting it regen. I mean, you could probably put them in a regen once a week, but I just don't know how these, how your trucks operate yet, haven't been around them long enough to know how fast the filter's get full.
Okay, and we have had issues, uh, DEF issues, and that's why we went to the internationals, because, uh, they seem to have less of an issue with that than the two that we traded in that were notorious for that. And, uh, cost us a lot of downtime and probably some money. Okay, all right, so, um, I've asked a lot of questions, but is there anything else you would want to ask of Matt while he's, while he's here?
Uh, not at this time for me, I do appreciate this list and stuff you hear, I've already went through and prioritized a couple of things there off of your list that I see. Health and safety issues, of course, you know, number ones on the list, and, and then I've done a few things there that, uh, I will review a little bit more in the order of things that, that I believe is going to be the most important and beneficial for you as well, so.
I did, did put that on there, but I found out this morning when I was in the bathroom in the office, all of our first aid kits are out of date. So, like, twenty sixteen out of date.
And what else in those kits, man?
They're burn creams, you know, the infection sprays, Band-Aids.
Tylenol.
Yeah, medicine, uh, I mean, they're like ones that, I would say you get from Xentals or something, they're the big steel ones that are up on the, the walls. But bandages, you gotta wear white or not yellow.
It's not a bad thing that they went out of date instead of getting used.
I mean, good, good point, Bill.
Yeah.
But at least, like, on the burn medicine and stuff, especially with grinding, like, bleach on that, all that stuff. Definitely get some, either new stuff of that, or I don't know where you can get all that. And then other than that, the last thing would be like the tire machine and the tire balancer, both of those are broke. When I got there, the tire balancer was full of oil, like somebody dumped, like a gallon of oil on top of it. I haven't even attempted to turn it on yet, I've been letting it dry out. But it's missing its cover for the wheel, so it was supposed to set it down over the top of it. The tire machine itself is missing air fittings and lines, so I don't know, John said they have, he doesn't ever remember them using it.
So how were those repairs made then? If we weren't about? No, I, I'm just curious with, with John, I, I understand what you did, but I wonder if John had.
I'm assuming probably they took them to, like, Dawson's or Tire Racing or somewhere in town. Because they say, like, all the truck tires now are from Dawson's, like pickup truck tires.
I think we typically have, um, purchased from multiple vendors, and, and I think that's, uh, uh, similar to what the sheriff's office does, so that different repair shops and vendors in town have an opportunity to, uh.
That was just the last place I remember they got stuff done at. But for me, I think it'd be smarter just to let the trucks go to a shop, because almost every time, they would need an alignment with how fast they go through tires. I know like my truck, the service truck, it needs to go in for an alignment bat, it's already eaten the inside wall out of the tires. George said they weren't on there that long when they put them on.
Well, we don't know the last time that you guys sent them out to balance the truck tire.
Yeah, and it's not being.
I was going to say, it's not going to do your dump truck tires, and not, from what I remember, it looks like, anyway. It's just basically for normal vehicle passenger style.
Well, it's just eating up space.
Mm-hmm.
Pretty little last thing I had on there.
So, Matt, how's the transition going with, uh, George, everything going okay?
Hmm?
Okay.
Yeah. I got it, he got back to his road grader yesterday and found a rat's nest in it, so we've been dealing with wiring issues on that one.
Were we sick, had it been idle for a period of time?
No, uh, just wherever the, whoever was in it last parked it, I guess, just mice have finally got up in there over the weekend and made a mess and chewed it up. So right now, so far, it's only, there's like lights and blinkers are the problem. And I've been chasing wires down as they kind of come apart. Couple of them are plugs, but I got to talk to cats and see if I can change the plugs out, or if that's something they do. Because I've got the DORX connectors. So, I just got to figure out, they, I don't know how far the warranty goes on cats. So, uh, the, but one of their service guys is coming down today or tomorrow to train me on the computer and go over the warranty aspects of everything.
Good.
So, good.
Good information, a lot of it I wasn't aware of, so I appreciate you being here. Anything else for Matt this morning?
Not at this time.
All right, um, that's not a priority, but I figured I'd throw that in here, since everything owns air conditioning. So you load that over later, but I am ASC certified for air conditioning stuff.
Matt? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, appreciate you coming by. All right, gentlemen, we're still in general county business. Okay, seeing nothing from the table at this point, ladies from the chamber, Ashley, anything you'd like to say?
We're just really busy in the chamber, which is a good thing, and, uh, just moving forward and doing a lot of good stuff, and seeing a lot of good stuff. So, communication's really exciting, so. We, uh, put out an application for people to join our board a couple of months ago, and locked it up for a short while and notified all the members, so they could apply. Made some really good applications come in, and we, uh, those new ones will have their first court meeting today, so I'm sure we'll announce those in the upcoming.
Good.
Yeah, we're excited to have them.
Good.
That's how you grow.
You bet. I guess we'll take up routine county business at this point, and then come back to general county business if anything comes up. Did, did you have a chance?
To discuss.
Emily, thank you.
Yeah.
Ashley, thank you.
I about hit your.
What was that, twenty-five year old?
Been saved.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna call you about her stuff.
Okay.
I'm gonna call you.
You bet. Did you have the chance to look over the council table and quote that in?
Yes, sir.
Oh, um, Matt did forget to bring one thing up. You might want to put him in touch with, uh, the old burner furnace people. He says there's some things that aren't completed yet, he wants to get that.
Did he say what they were?
Uh, he may have, but I would just be talking about things I don't fully understand, so. He said winter's coming.
Well, it just turned summer.
Yeah, just.
This week.
It's all downhill from there. Days are getting short.
We, you know, it's been a while back, and I think that you actually went down and visited with nine-one-one dispatch and stuff, to make sure they had all the names and numbers and contacts and stuff like that, whenever something happens that they need to contact to get something taken care of, situation taken care of. Is that right, or?
Well, Joe, I'm not exactly sure what you're referring to.
A call gets called in.
If it's a road issue, they would typically call the sheriff's department. And then we might get a call from them to go out and clear a tree or whatever. So, but I think the first thing would be to call law enforcement, and then from there would be to call road and bridge. The reason why I say that, safety first, you know, if there's something out there that.
Well, I'm not saying, the the normal citizen stuff is calling in, because you call the twenty-three eleven line that goes straight to dispatch.
Right.
So, yeah, that's where they all call in, I guess, is the call center or whatever, however that's being handled, so. But what I'm getting at there is, do they have, because I thought you were visiting with Mr. Falls and then down there, and made sure they had the list. Do they have the right list on who to call, to contact after the call comes into them? And the reason why I'm bringing that up is because Friday, I've had three calls since then, of course, on roads and stuff taken care of that's went on, but they still called Joe Pickering. Is why I'm asking that.
They called him?
Mm-hmm, yeah, not, not individual people dispatch ended up, because I asked them. They called at eleven-twenty-four, I believe it was, I was in church, yeah, on this one right here, on Sunday, eleven-twenty-four AM is when I got the call. And whenever I'd call them back, since I got out of church, I'd call them back, I don't take my phone into church, I didn't take the county phone into church. Uh, so I'd end up calling them back, and whenever I'd done that, I'd ask them if they'd already contacted somebody else, or if they still need to take care of the situation. And they said, we've called all three lines, and nobody answered. I said, which of the lines? One of them was John Beards, and then the other one, they had to look and said that it went to Pickering. So, I just wanted maybe to revisit Mr. Falls, so where he can get a proper contact list.
Yeah, and then we, and then we probably need to have a visit with Road and Bridge too, because they should be responding to those phone calls. Um, so we probably have a couple of, a couple of concerns here that need to be addressed.
I don't know if John ever called back in from the missed call, or, you know, if he even had service, I don't know, I didn't ask John anybody if he got a call on Sunday. Uh, I do know that I went ahead and I called, uh, because I don't wanna always call the same person, I wanna call each different people and spread that around for the on-call stuff, basically, after hours. Uh, I'd called a couple of them, of course, they was Hayfield and this and that, and it was fine. Uh, I did get ahold of Rob, called him out on that one, uh, to go assess it, and everything, to start clearing the road. Uh, he did pass it, because it was completely shut down. That was out on Harvest. Uh, with that being said as well, I'd also called, I'd called Jeremy prior to calling Rob and everything. Uh, Jeremy did call me back whenever he got out of church and everything. And, uh, Rob was down with chainsaw and stuff, moving, I sent Jeremy down there with the backhoe as well, because the limb and the way that it was, it had to be held on to to cut it loose for safety reasons and stuff there as well. And, uh, then I had them just move that on over onto the same property that it came off of, just down in Woods Littleways. So, they did get it all completed and cleared up. But the main thing is, if they're not calling the proper numbers, it's gonna be hard for us to know what and where we need to be and how to take care of it.
Okay, so I think, uh, this all relates to the roads, right? So, I I think we need to, uh, set up the, uh, who we expect to go out there. Uh, and I would like to have that before I go down there and visit with dispatch. So, do do we, I don't think we wanna give them all the Road and Bridge numbers. But who, what, who do we want them to call first, or second, or third?
Yeah, at this time right now, I don't mind it being Eric and I. And then we can, you know, whatever area it's in, and it doesn't matter, if they call me, it's an Eric's area, then I'm either gonna call Eric and tell him, then he can call whatever guy he thinks will best fit for that area that lives the closest and stuff like that, so I'm not getting charged, you know, an hour's driving time, just because of he's that far away, or whatever.
Okay.
Uh, so I don't mind that part of it. And then, yes, then I do believe we need to have a third, or second, and third call there as well, just like with John being, I guess, the number two is the place he basically put it. The dispatch that I talked to. Okay, because I think it goes from us to figure out who we're gonna send. And then they need to come back, call back to us and stuff, I mean, because I'm asking for pictures and everything else whenever I send them out, to do that stuff. I want befores and afters.
What was, is that the red phone was number one, John was number two, and then it went to the commission after that? But, due to our circumstances.
One and two, and probably John, three.
I was the one on Harvest.
Would be my guess.
Did you change the order? Shouldn't that still be one, because you're planning on.
This phone, until it finds a body, a permanent body, probably doesn't even need to be on there. That's just my two cents worth, because if I'm, if I'm, if he's gone, I I'm not packing two phones around. I can't hardly keep track of the ones.
You just run the risk of a disheveling, that's why.
Well, shuffling, you know, it it beats them calling something that's significant.
I sent Alan as well. I said it had to be Rocky's show.
Yeah.
That was Rob there on that one. And then we, and, uh, that one got sent to me.
Yeah, I seen that one.
Did you? I think I sent, I sent it to you. Yeah. I've seen that truck around town, it doesn't just happen, it breaks or barely pull out of anywhere. And if you really blow that picture up, you can see where somebody was probably trying to little bit of burn out.
Trying to, trying to play with it.
Yes, sir. So, but, yeah. So, yeah, so having that, you know, I think we need to, like you said, I mean, yeah, I'm put the numbers in play there, however, and go from there, but I just wanna make sure they get the proper contacts and stuff.
Well, after the meeting, I'll go down there and get them both of your phone numbers and ask them what they have on file currently. And if there's, uh, previous commissioners' numbers on there, they will be removed.
I'm just gonna recommend, once again, that this phone get taken off there. That way, Joe or I didn't even want to have this phone around.
I'd be all right with that, use the phone.
So.
All the guys.
All the people that should determine this phone.
Does this need signed here?
Yes, please.
Just on this front page?
Uh-huh, one time.
Did you see that estimate from Mike that shows your company?
No, you were, you were the only one that shared any information about that. He gets twenty, still twenty-something dollars for show.
Yeah.
I just, Joe, I just, based upon the conversation, I would have you have taken care of it.
Yeah, yeah, I do have any contact.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to have a copy, just in case you wanted to say it or anything, the, I'd already spoke with her. Well, I left her a message, I haven't got, she hasn't really contacted me back. I told him to go ahead and move forward, proceed forward, and tell him about that, so he can get a date and all that stuff, you know?
Those are the same as these, it's just going back to the assessor's office.
Right. Look over that, I would talk to you on it, but I don't know if you wanna look over for any reason or not.
Can't really remember about where it came out. So, that is still in preliminary estimate base, about that.
Yeah, I, like I said, I reached out to her, told her to go ahead and reach out to them and set a date, and so they proceed forward. Haven't had her back from her yet, so she may have just went ahead and went on from there. Another one of the calls that I sent Guy driver down on, it was a shed roof that was on Jewel Road. And then these people here put that out, and I'm trying to reach back to that particular person, and I can't get ahold of that person. Basically, what they're saying is that it's actually ended up, they dumped it on purpose, because I did not see any marks in the road where it had blown off, where it had fell off, or it had, you know, like, say you're driving down through there by yourself and it slides off your trailer, you're not gonna get it put back on by yourself. So, in today's world, we wouldn't just drop off, I mean, we would call somebody.
Well, there's people that have driven off, uh, after dumping about thirty or forty tires. They've driven off, that we tend to go pick up.
They didn't just lose them off of there.
Well, they probably lost them.
Yeah, but.
Depends on what your definition of lost is.
It's the same, basically the same thing with this here, basically just confirming to me that they, like, they backed up, because you can see some marks. Once I seen that, that, and they just unloaded it right there, so.
So, have they gone anywhere further than that?
No, I don't, I don't know if there's been anything done with the sheriff's department or anything on that or not, I didn't know. If we just go ahead and just clean that up, but it is out of the way, it is on, in harm's way at this time. Or it wasn't, I don't know if they got out there and already got it picked up or not. Uh, because I mentioned for John to, uh, through Guy, and then for John, just walked up the mini. And just, he could scoop it up, pick it up, and probably just load it, and unload the mini, probably just pull up or do it, pick it up, put it on the bike of his truck, and take off, you know, and you have to do two or three grabs, there's it was a whole Gannold-style shed roof, single roof. So, probably about eight by, eight to ten, ten to twelve roof, and mattress, and some other stuff there too.
No identifying anything on it, right, no mail that happened to slide off?
Not from them, but this, somebody put a posting out there, they've seen this Dodge truck, and got their license plate number, and I tried to try to contact, so I'll probably just.
Yeah.
Yeah. Take it down there. Yeah, I'm gonna see if they make it, the license plate number, because somebody mentioned a name in that post, I think. So. But we'll see.
Public comments, items listed on the agenda?
Uh, yeah, I guess just to give a bit more context to some of the road and bridge discussions, would you all minds give an overview of how you all run the department while you're searching for a foreman? Just sort of like who handles those foreman duties typically, and how you divided that up?
So, the commission continues to search for a road and bridge foreman. Uh, we are still accepting a- applications. Uh, in the interim, then, the East and West Commissioner are fulfilling those responsibilities, working closely with uh, the Road and Bridge crew to make sure that work is being, uh, scheduled, that work is being performed, and we're maintaining the county roads. Uh, and that will continue up until the time that we, uh, hire a road and bridge foreman. Public comments, items not listed on the agenda, none, okay. I think I would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session for personnel reasons, if if you would, uh, grant me that privilege.
Go in a form of motion?
I won't, I won't make the motion.
Okay, so you're asking for a motion for personnel. I'll make a motion to go into closed session for personnel reasons at this time?
Yeah, second.
Okay, I have a motion second to enter, uh, closed session for personnel reasons, uh, any further discussion, seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Jenny?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes, we're now in closed session.